Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Andover School Committee meeting Thursday, January 18th, 2024. Call the meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And we will begin with public comments. Seeing none, hearing none? Well, I believe we don't have any recognition this evening, or do we?
No, just something quick with the storm this weekend, this Monday. You know, we obviously had a full day. And I was thrilled about Tuesday, being able to get on on regular time. But just a shout out to the custodians. They did a really good job and they're really dedicated getting out there, doing the sidewalks, doing all the, around the school. It's a lot of work and they put a lot of extra hours in, so thank you.
Thank you, custodians. All right. I don't think we have consent items tonight, right? We don't have the minutes yet from last Thursday. So we skip over that and we get right away to our student reps' report. And tonight, we only have Ben Abbott. So Ben, it's all yours.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ben. CC and Harper, who are usually here, are busy studying for midterms next week. Speaking of which, it's that time of year. It's the end of the first semester. And many teachers are giving midterms, which are scheduled through next week. Luckily, I don't have any, really kind of somehow. But with kind of the end of the first semester, course recommendations and course selections for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are also out. So kind of all adds up to a pretty stressful time of year for much of the student body. Basketball, science team, DECA are three clubs that are really doing well this year. DECA, I think, sent almost 60 people to the state final, yeah, the state competition for finance. Science team is currently in first place in North Shore Science League. And boys' basketball is currently in first place for Division One in MIA rankings. Other clubs, such as environmental, are in full swing. At an environmental meeting today, there was over 30 people, which is just great to see. And kind of the big news is myself and eighth grader Alex Havermeyer from the middle school participated in Project 351 launch over the weekend in Boston. Project 351, for those who don't know, is a statewide service organization in which one student from every town in Massachusetts, which kind of gives the organization its name, 351 towns, represents their town in a year of service in which they perform civic action and community drives. And that all starts on Martin Luther King Weekend in Boston. We heard from dignitaries like the governor, Senator Ed Markey, and other service heroes from around Boston, and then went out and did service in the city of Boston. But most importantly, this begins the year of Alex Havermeyer's kind of service ambassadorship for the town. They'll collect clothes as part of spring service, collect food as part of fall service, and get to know kind of the local government, local service heroes, and be mentored by myself, Lila Lobel, who's a freshman at the high school and last year's service ambassador, and the whole kind of Project 351 apparatus, including many other alumni in the Project 351 staff. She'll grow as a person, as a leader, and as a change maker. And I'm really excited to watch, watch that process. So that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Any questions for Ben?
Ben, for Project 351, do you ever get to come back once you're in college or?
Yeah, so a couple alumni will come back and help out, just as kind of day of volunteers or day before volunteers. So hopefully, fingers crossed, breaks line up and things like that. And then a couple will, some colleges nowadays will give like grants to, because Project 351 doesn't really have the resources to hire like a college-age intern, but colleges will give grants to make unpaid internship paid. So they almost always have like a fellow helping out at their office. So hopefully.
Were you our first, first participant in this, or were there people ahead of you that did it?
This was the 14th class, but a lot of, most ambassadors kind of leave after that eighth grade year. Only a few kind of continue on through high school. Either they go to private school or they find other things that they're involved in in high school. But, yeah.
But you stuck with it?
Yeah, I stuck with it.
All right, great. Well, we're happy you did.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, next we have, we are flying. Next we have the superintendent's report.
Yes, we do. So a couple, just a couple items tonight. If you haven't checked it out, check out the Nightside Podcast with Dr. Gilligan and Dr. Mailey. You can find that as well as the newspaper, the, excuse me, the nightly news online under the school news. And I'm sure you'll find it riveting. We're up to three episodes now. We're getting ready for our fourth. So exciting. The robotics competition is this Saturday, and that is from 8:00 AM to 4:00 AM in the Crozier Gymnasium at North Andover High School. And then our mock trial team. I think you guys recall Mr. Oberlander came last year with Ms. Cooperstein. He's one of our teachers at the high school. Ms. Cooperstein's a local practice and attorney who volunteers her time. They'll be taking on other high schools. And there's two dates set right now. One's for Lawrence District Court, and that's the 29th of January, rescheduled from this past Monday, and February 6th. And then Salem District Court. And just to be clear, Salem District Court is Salem, Mass. District Court. You mentioned Salem in the Marionback Valley. People think they're going up to Salem, New Hampshire. And so they'll be, they'll be there. And really, the trial court of Massachusetts, it's really awesome for them to let us use their facilities. Last year, I went to the one in Lowell. I had never been to Lowell District Court. It's beautiful. And they had the court officers at the mock trial, just like they were working a regular trial. So it was a really cool, awesome experience, and that's what we have happening.
All right. Any comments? So now I think we have to wait till 7:30 to start the public hearing? Is that so it's published? Is that true?
Can we bounce the order?
You could take out of order. You could take the calendar out of order, or you could do the other updates, or you want to do the chair's report.
Yeah, all right. So do I need a motion to do that? No, I can just do it? Take things out of order? All right. So I assume no one will object. Please object if you're going to object. So we'll go, we'll just keep going in order. Chair's report. Just wanted to comment on the new look and compliment the new look of the nightly news. I really like it. The format's good. It's phone-friendly. Looking on a phone, you can see, it's really very accessible. Oh, we gonna show it? Yeah.
It's the button up top that says translate.
So if you go right up top to translate, now look at the host of languages we can change it to.
Well, let's see it.
Do they have Bulgarian?
Oh, very good. Interesting. Master plan comes through the same, oh, almost the same way.
And on your phone, if you're looking at it on your phone, I don't think it says the word translate, but it looks like a little person. And you would click on that to be able to translate it to a different language.
Well, if you're giddy now, wait till you get, wait till, you know, I don't know if it'll be the next meeting or the one after. We're gonna get a portable camera. We're gonna be down at the new copier. And we're gonna take something from English, put it through, and change it to Mandarin, whatever you want, and it translates.
I feel like we need to go the other way.
We can do that as well.
He put it into English and put it into German, but I'm just gonna be like, it looks nice. Take something from.
Or vice versa.
That's even better.
With the, is translating automatically available in SMOR? Or is that something extra with the type of membership we, license we buy, which is worth it?
I want to say that you have to purchase. There are two, there are different options in SMOR. A basic membership, I do not believe will translate it. But we have the expanded version, and we have 15 licenses. So it's used by our guidance department, the directors, superintendent, all the principals are using, just about all the principals are using it now in their newsletters, the guidance department, I say that. Cheryl Barzac has an account now, Steve Nugent, our athletic director. So trying to spread it to groups who will share news with the community.
I think the better version of it is well worth the small cost that goes with it to have that function. And then we are able to see like how many people are seeing them. Are we seeing good numbers of people open and look at the newsletters?
So the December nightly news had 1,000 people. That.
1,009.
I was one of the nine.
They read it.
How many translate?
I don't know if we can get the stat on the translation.
I'm going to the analytics to see if I can look at that.
We can take a look.
It'd be pretty interesting. I mean, I think it'd be great. I mean, obviously, it's going to take time for people to understand that it's there and that it's an option. They may just be somewhat deleting it. But if they know that it's available in their language, I would, I would love to see that grow. Obviously, that would be fantastic.
So I'm curious, if, if you have an account and you wanted to say post-information for a parent, if you're a classroom teacher and you wanted to put some parent information out, could you use this so that, that they could access it that way? Does it have that capability?
The school could use it.
That's what I'm saying.
The school has an account. So if their school was doing an activity and they wanted to do like a flyer for like an invite, they could create an invite and then send it out, and then a parent can translate that. Yes.
Okay, so we use them that way. Okay. Well, that's got, that's gotta be helpful. But anyway, we were, I was talking about shouting out to the new, new editing and, and format of the nightly news is great. It's really nice. It's especially nice that it's readable on here. It's a lot of people, that's how they get their, their news. I might be one of them. Okay, so that's that. And then the second thing, I just want to acknowledge that, that we heard the presentation from CPAC last Thursday, and that we are going to discuss that in our budget discussion later. So it's acknowledged. We heard it. We absorbed it. And we'll, we'll be talking about it. All right. Do you have anything, Joe, you want to add?
Steel work at the North Andover Middle School continues to happen. They had two inspections last week to make sure that the connections between the steel and the new decking and the, and the foundation were good, and they were great. They put the new decking in for the second floor so that we can then have a second floor, which is great. So I love this part of a construction project. It looks like lots of things are happening where, like great things are happening, but it's a lot of visible progress. You don't necessarily see all the progresses quickly with site work, and then once it's enclosed, you don't see all the progresses quickly because it's behind closed doors. So this is the fun part.
All right.
And we're still on schedule.
Dr. Mailey, anything else on the middle school? No, that covers it. I think that's it. It's, I just can't believe how quick it's going up. Like, you know, I had watched them put the A back together pretty quickly with those, with that construction.
Well, they were already put together.
Well, they came in 47 pieces. Oh, believe me, I was there with Dr. Price, and they didn't have a helmet big enough for me, so I had to wear my scooter helmet. Looked like Mike Dukakis. Anyway, the, but it's like, it's remarkable. It is. And, you know, I thought, you know, there's always some type of interruption, you know, when you're doing this kind of work. And it's been really seamless and have done a, well, I'm saying in terms of like, it's just, it's well, it's safe, it's well blocked off. It's, they're doing a great job.
All right. Well, I didn't say it, but we're now on to the school building committee updates that we just got for the North Andover Middle School. What about Kittredge?
Yep, we actually met yesterday. Good meeting, relatively quick, but, you know, good updates for where we are. They did a preliminarily, preliminary design of the website. So we get to kind of take a look at that. That'll, as more kind of information kind of gets developed, that'll be added to that. And then that will be launched really once we kind of have design submission, so probably in the next month or so. But a lot of great work. It's starting to look really nice, just to see that. I think it was last week, there were a number of walkthroughs. So we had, I think it was 12 companies who did design walkthroughs or, or studies. So they kind of looked at the facility and looked at the building that was there. So their submissions are due on January 31st, so roughly two weeks or so away. So anticipate that. And then after that, the firm that we have, Collier, will do some initial review. And then the selection committee will review that for about two weeks and then make a recommendation on, I think it's the 14th of February, and our next meeting is the 15th.
Initial recommendation on which, what the design will?
What the design and the company for that.
Design firm, yeah.
Yeah.
Are they presenting just like, just like some simple like overviews of what the design could be, or are they?
No, they're just talking about what projects they've done in the past and, yeah, it's, they won't be showing any type of concept. It's just their qualifications.
That's, that's February 15th? That about?
They, their submissions are due January 31st. The selection of that will be done by the 14th of February, and we will meet to review that on the 15th. Or that's our next meeting, I should say. And those are all public meetings.
And where are the meetings?
They should be in the select board room down at Town Hall. We did have some technical challenges, so we may look to change it to another room within the building, but that'll be posted for that, in the Town Hall building.
Yeah, but the two meetings for review and selection are recommendations of, they're done through Zoom. We've used the word a lot, prescribed. MSBA has a very prescriptive process. So they actually have, I think it was 10, right? 10 people on that selection committee, and we have three.
Correct.
And so that's the group that will make the decision. And then there'll be a recommendation that goes forward to the school building committee.
10 people from MSBA.
Correct.
As we go forward with the project, will we have more representation on the building committee so that?
I believe so. I was surprised at this part of it. I think this is the one part that.
They get involved?
It's like that. Yes.
Is 12 a good number? Like, so we had, we had 12 or 10 pre-qualified bidders for the middle school, and we only had a few bids come in. Is 12 a good number at this point to get, do you think we'll get 12?
Collier's based on their experience, seemed to think so.
They actually were pretty excited there were 12. 12 walkthroughs.
12 walkthroughs.
Right, and it was not mandatory.
Right.
So we could get 12, we could get more, we could get less.
For the proposals, there were over 40 that looked at it. And then 12 did physical walkthroughs. So, you know, we, we could get three, we could get 33.
Yeah, the size of that project is kind of in the sweet spot for a lot of companies.
Yeah, it's bigger than the middle school.
Yep.
And they said, I think they mentioned that occasionally, occasionally, like the 12 doesn't mean that there are, those other parties aren't interested. They just didn't do that actual walkthrough the other day.
Thank you.
All right, that's it. All good questions?
Very good. So that's, that's our school building updates, and I think it does.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we maybe go on to calendars.
Oh, yes.
Because we shouldn't have our continuing discussion until after we have public hearing.
So, right. Why am I not seeing that on here?
It's on the next page.
Oh, it's the very top. There it is. Okay. Yep. Let's go on to calendars. First read. So two options, a pre-Labor Day start and a post-Labor Day start.
Just a brief background, and then I'll.
Please.
Turn it over to the chair or vice chair. The, in past contracts that we've settled with the Teachers Association, there've been very prescribed dates. Schools start this year on this day for students and that type of thing. The language in the contract now is similar. It's just the 31st, so it allows this year to go either way.
It's not earlier than.
Yeah, it's not earlier than. It's 31st, correct.
In prior contracts, it, we had identified the start date.
Yes.
The start date for teachers, I should say.
Yes.
Not for students, but this one states that the teachers do not return earlier than specific dates per years.
Yeah, it's typically that Monday before, the week before Labor Day. That's what it was the last contract for all three years. And the only other part of it was students instructional year, you know, days they, when they start school will start no later than the Tuesday, Labor Day. Tuesday following Labor Day, and terminate no later than June 30th. We went to June 30th, wasn't we?
These are both late. The end dates are really late. But I think it's because December, the, the winter break.
It's longer than.
It's longer because of where the holidays fall.
If we have, again, if we start earlier, if we start before Labor Day and we have no snow days, it's the 17th.
Oh, right. I was looking at the last day.
That's the, if we have five days.
Yeah, I was looking at the snow days.
And there's a June 19th is a no-school day regardless.
Yep. Thank you. I was looking at the, at the, with the snow days.
All right, so it's either the 30th.
With no snow days.
The no, the no-school days for whatever reason.
Before Labor Day, we'd need a no-school snow day.
Day of the 13th.
13th.
And, yeah, okay.
13th and 17th. Sorry, did I say that wrong?
Yes. 13th and 17th.
Because the other ones.
That's really early.
It is, and I feel like we've, we've had, well, this year, we, we haven't even had a snow day yet, but, right? We've had one, we've used one of the three for actual snow. The other two have been other things.
Power.
And I feel like that's happened more than once in the past couple of years, that we've had to use a day for something else. I, I much prefer in this, because of the way things lay out, the, the before Labor Day one. Because something will happen and we'll be out sometime the week of the 16th, I bet, like that. And that would feel normal and regular and fair and okay to me. So that's, that's my feeling.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that the calendar start date is kind of one of those things that's just divided. There's people that, you know, prefer before, and there's people that prefer after, and there's pros and cons to both. But looking at the dates and making sure that we don't get too close to the end of June, I think, is the safer, safer way to go.
The June 25th is, makes me sad. Even this year, it would be June 23rd, and that makes me sad.
That's late, you know, and then if there's a really bad storm or a few storms, it could happen.
The students tell me they'd like to start late and end early.
And they're pretty consistent. I remember they're pretty consistent about that.
I don't blame them.
I mean, if we, and this doesn't always happen, but like, the second one, June 25th, that only leaves three more before you have to start doing some really bad, uncomfortable decisions about.
Like a Saturday or something.
Saturdays or April or things you really don't want to do.
If you have a really bad weather year or a real bad power year.
Exactly.
You could call it power year.
Yeah, and you guys, I don't know if anyone, Andrew was probably on the committee when we had the nine days off one year. And three of them were for the ice storm of October that knocked out power for three days in town. So that year, we actually went to the last day of June.
I remember that year.
June 30th.
And I remember Andover was going on Saturdays.
Yeah, I remember that too, my good friend. Yes, Andover went on Saturdays, and we didn't, what did we do? We were, we were just up against the wall, right?
We did something with Good Friday.
That's right.
Good Friday, we made a school day, but excused for religious reasons.
Yeah, that's right. I remember that, yeah.
I've always been a pre, a, a post-Labor Day. And have voted to start before. And I think one of the things, as I negotiated, I think it might have been two contracts ago, with the teachers, that they kind of pointed out, which at the time, I didn't have high schoolers. So it didn't really resonate. So many of our student athletes and band members are here. I think basically the 12th of August, which is kind of the middle of the month. And those teachers are here, and, you know, that's a good portion of our students were here, and that was a really compelling argument.
To start sooner.
To start a little bit sooner with that. The other thing, which not necessarily, you know, should be a dividing factor for us as well, but a lot of the summer camps tend to start kind of that last week in June as well. And there are families who, you know, might be booking out, you know, sometimes they're, you know, two-week intervals and they're, they could still be in school for, you know, two or three days of that. So that kind of swayed me a little bit more into the pre-Labor Day and just the whole, you know, kind of get the wiggles out in August and then really start September, you know, with a bang. So.
That one year, we went to June 30th. And I remember the, the parents was asked, we got a few calls and they were asking, now, if they went to Brook School Day Camp one day and then back to school the next, like, could they get credit for Brook? I said, no, that's, the state doesn't count it that way. So the camp thing's a good point.
Yeah. Yeah, and the athletes are a good point, too, is if they're involved in anything in the fall or band, they're, they've got to be.
Band and football, they're huge for numbers, and then all the other sports.
I ran into the problem with camp one year, that the last day of school was going to be a Monday. We had, we went to camp.
Well, I'm not hearing a lot of, a lot of, a lot of interest in the post-Labor Day start. Do you, do you have any thoughts?
When I had kids, you know, in the middle school and high school, I was always leaning towards that post-Labor Day. Why wasn't it then? But having now younger children coming in, I see a big benefit to starting before Labor Day as far as their overall health coming out of summer into school, having those couple of days to kind of get on schedule and then a weekend to kind of recover before going in full force. So from a mental health and emotional perspective, I think there's a benefit to that of starting before Labor Day.
All right.
Just one other question. I mean, obviously, with the winter holiday, we're out the 23rd. You know, it's a relatively long winter recess. Any thoughts on the 20th? It's down here as a half-day. Should that be a full day?
In terms of calendar and regardless, we, we have enough instructional minutes, so it wouldn't. We, we do, both, the calendar as a half-day still meets all the obligations that we need to. So then, because they're going to be out so long, is it better to have a full day that day, you mean?
I don't think, from a teacher's perspective, it's going to change your instructional strategies.
On the last day before winter break. Just asking the question.
It's gonna be the same.
Is that pending on the class? I'm just being really honest.
It's fine.
Yeah, everybody's already mentally checked out.
And ready to go and, you know.
Just asking the question. Cue the hate mail.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's probably a practical reality, right? There, no one's going to be interested in paying attention after 11 o'clock.
Yeah, no new content is being, you know, started that time, and I doubt there'd be, you know, exams or anything on that day, so.
All right. I think, is there any need for further discussion? This is the first read, right? So we don't have to actually vote anyway. All right, good. I mean, I'm, personally, I'm indifferent, and I think that the, the arguments for the, having had athletes, multiple athletes, I was always around before Labor Day anyway. They always had to be back. It, it just seemed better for us. But it's, it's not a strong feeling for me. All right, so it is seven. Alright, so it is seven, it's exactly, almost exactly, about eight seconds away from 7:30, so we can get ourselves into the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move, are we moving? I make a motion to go into public hearing for the discussion of discussing the superintendent's recommended fiscal year '25 budget.
Second.
Alright, let's, any discussion on the motion? Alright, let's vote, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Conick?
Yes.
Ms. Pachowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so we are now in public hearing. FY '25 budget. So, I think it would be worthwhile, um, well, I don't need, I don't think I need to read, you know what, maybe I will. I'll just read the special procedures, so everybody's aware of what they are. Conducting all public hearings required by law and others as deemed advisable, school committee will give due in public notice in line with statutory requirements and seek to publicize the meeting in all local media, which we've done, make available printed information on the topic of the hearing, which we have, and give all persons an equal opportunity to be heard in accordance with our policy. The chairperson of the committee, that's me, will preside. Public will be informed at the beginning of the hearing, the procedure that will be followed in regard to questions, remarks, rebuttals, and any time limitations or other rules that must be followed to give everyone an opportunity to be heard. And in conformance with customary hearing procedures, statements and supporting information will be presented first by the committee or by others for the committee. And to comment, citizens must be recognized by the chair. All remarks must be addressed to the chair and be germane to the topic. To assure all who wish to get a chance to speak, the chair will recognize persons who have not commented previously during the hearing before recognizing persons who wish to remark a second time. And that is from the Mass Association of School Committees. Alright, so, at this point, is there anything needed to be presented? I mean, we went through this all next, last week.
This is for the public to come as we get to sit and listen.
Okay. Does our member of the public wish to speak?
Sure. Sasha Wyrich, 21 Sawyer, thank you all for being here and your commitment to our schools. I just wanted to thank you for allowing CPAC to present at your last meeting, and I would appreciate, and so would all of our members of CPAC your consideration in our budget requests for FY '25. I also would like to urge the school committee and considering some of the discussion at the last meeting to delay the vote on the budget as much as you potentially possibly could or, you know, allowed in order to consider any recommendations that are received by the Special Education Review. And that's it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sasha.
Now, I think we, we have to leave this, I mean, just to sit here, right, until the time is up?
No, you can, you usually give it a little more time.
A little bit of time, I mean, I don't think we have to do 15, but, you know.
Five minutes or so.
Solid five.
In case somebody shows up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll keep an eye out for the cars coming down the driveway here. I feel like I'm in, I was just thinking Field of Dreams, and like this, they're coming around the corner, so.
I'm both proud and sad that we thought of that.
Just a reminder, we're
If we open the hearing, they will come.
Just a reminder, we're still on the air.
Yes, my favorite movie for the record. Have you been there to the, the?
I have not.
No, I haven't either, but I have played in Cooperstown. They, when you play baseball in Cooperstown, either with kids or adults, they have a very, very similar ball field there with corn growing out in the outfield. You can take a picture walking out.
Some Jeopardy music?
Well, the
Just gonna get a quick drink while we're quitting.
We're like the flood, we just want to look at our Kahoot, that music's fun.
Well, the good news is there's no, the storm Friday is, looks like it's going to be to the south.
Tomorrow or next Friday?
This Friday, they're supposed to be out.
Oh.
Less than an inch tomorrow.
To the south like Tennessee or to the south as in Southern Massachusetts near the Holliston area?
Southern Massachusetts near the Holliston.
I think Holliston's, Holliston's one to, one to three. Just enough to be a pain in the neck.
It's gonna just sit there and snow. Oh, while we're waiting, so, I spent last weekend in New York. I'm walking down the street in Greenwich Village with this hat on, and these two young people about early twenties are walking by, and I hear one of them say, "North Andover." And so, they were, you know, recent grads from here, from sometime in the last five years, and, you know, our distinctive logo caught their eye.
It's exciting.
Yeah, so I chatted with them, and my wife and daughter are like, "What? Who are you talking to in the middle of New York City?" I said, "These guys were, you know."
She tried to hide.
So, our branding is working.
That's right.
It's actually more challenging when we had to go into a separate Zoom meeting
Yeah.
and then come back. That, that took, that took some time.
The awkward silence, I had a moment.
Feels like moonstruck.
I think we're, is a good call tonight, 566 Dillon Street?
Yep. Conference room.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to end the public hearing on the superintendent's recommended budget for fiscal year '25.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Do we need to, does anyone have any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Pachowski?
Yes.
I always go back and forth, it's just my thing. Ms. Conick?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the public hearing is concluded, and we are back in regular session. So, um, done with that, done with that. Now, we have continued discussion of the superintendent's recommended budget. There were several questions that I had put in an email, then, and so that email was transmitted back out to all of us. Do we want to, does anybody have any further questions about that?
I just have a question, this, this, that was provided to us. Is this the same one that was from last week? Were there any changes?
I don't believe so.
The bullet, I believe that we, um, in the
There's an old bullet that had to be updated.
Oh.
There was an old bullet, the transportation bullet, but also on the one about the reviews. The, the original one only had three bullets, and now it has four.
Okay, thank you.
One. On the reviews for consideration in the original, there were three bullets, and now there are four.
Oh, additional, additional consideration slide.
Thank you. That was the, um,
I thought that was already there.
It wasn't, not in the printed one.
Oh, that, yes.
It was shown last week on the slides, it talked about, but it wasn't in your printed version in your book.
And what was the, I'm sorry, and, Pam, what was the other one?
The other one was the transportation.
Transportation.
It just, there was an additional sentence that was incorrect and was removed. Thank you.
There were some questions that came up last week. I can
Yeah, why don't we go, yeah.
Do we, do you do the whole presentation again, or we just dive right in?
No, we, we
Just dive, okay.
Just dive right in.
Great.
So, so to begin with, question came up regarding the net school spending versus, you know, our net school spending versus the required net school spending. And the difference in the last end-of-year report, which was FY '23, was $14.1 million. We're over the required net school spending by $14.1 million, so not even close, we're well over. The other question that came up, and Sasha just referenced it, was the deadline for approval. We, by scheduling for the February 1st, we were right up against it already. I spoke with the town manager, and she indicated they have to back up from the date of town meeting. And her budget to present to the select board is due February 5th. And that's including the school department budget, so, and that's Monday.
We don't even have an extra week.
One day. If, you know, we have the Thursday meeting or Friday, and then it, so she has to present on Monday the 5th. And then the third thing that came up was, where do we rank in per pupil spending? What has happened? How much have we moved the needle? Over the last five years, we have gone from the 32nd lowest in per pupil spending in this state to the 68th lowest. So, the, the needle's moving, and it's interesting too, because based on what I'm hearing from other districts, their percentage increases this year are going to be much lower than ours. So, we would expect that needle to continue to move in that direction.
We're also seeing over the past couple of years, declining enrollment in some of our neighboring communities as well, so I'm curious how that will kind of even out.
Yeah, I, I haven't checked it this year, but as of last year, coming out of COVID, the state average was a 4% decrease, and we were looking at a 2% decrease. So, I have to see what that looks like now, but we had seen less loss than other districts.
Dr. Merely, going back to your first point, we're 14.1 million over. Last year, our budget was roughly 56.
So, this is referencing end-of-year report, which captures all expenses, grants, revolving
Got it.
operating. So, we're at 68 plus something, million dollars versus a 54 million net school spending requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do we want to talk about the, the extra questions?
Sure.
So, there were, there were five additional ones. One was about contract services. Basically, the question was, it's one of the largest line items, you know, what are those services primarily made up of? And, and do we usually use up the whole budget for that?
Yes, we definitely do.
Yeah.
It's predominantly the regular education, transportation part of that contract, maintenance, some maintenance contracts, and then various contracted services that we do not have in district that we have to bring in. But we, we almost always use it up, yes.
Okay, the, the second one was that I noticed the electricity, heating, fuel, vehicle fuel, all were flat budget.
Right, and that's because we're transferring it over to the town. And actually, for the utilities, with the credits we've been getting on electricity and the warmer winters, we're not exceeding, we're not reaching that level of what we've budgeted. We certainly are in the repairs and maintenance and contract services part, but, so it kind of offsets, but there's no need to do an increase.
Increase that number, right.
Correct.
It's just whenever you see fuel, you think, you know, it's, it's always more than the year before, right?
And then the other part of it is, it would only go up if usage went up, because the rates are going to stay the same for next year.
We have that, we have a, we have a contract, the town has contracted rate?
We sign a regional contract, yep.
Alright, good. Another question was that, that, there was no line item for data services, but I guess, well, I'll let you answer, but I figured out what that is.
Yeah, so data services is, we have, in our capital account, we have $200,000 a year that IT has available for infrastructure. And if it's not all used, then they can use it for devices or other IT needs. And we have a network manager that's funded by the town that manages our network as well.
So, that doesn't need to be in our budget?
Correct.
Then another question was what the line item for homeless students was all about?
Yeah, homeless is a difficulty for, well, obviously for the homeless. Homeless, the definition of that is if students have a residence in North Andover, in our case, and then they, for whatever reason, no longer have that, but they might be living with a relative or a friend somewhere else in another town, and they haven't established permanent residence somewhere else, they are homeless as per DESI, and we're responsible for making sure they get to and from school. And all the districts are responsible for that, and it's a growing expense that we're seeing and all districts are seeing. So, you've seen it go from $25,000 to $125,000 over the last few years.
It's a federal legislation, the McKinney-Vento law requires it of all, all schools, all over the country.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I just said, you know, you see that line item, you don't know what it means, so I
Yeah, it's not as clear as, right, you need that definition, that, that context.
And just for context, there was a change in the law probably about six or seven years ago, where if the student changed schools, so went from elementary to middle, they could go, we were not technically responsible for them. Where they were would then kind of pick up the education for them. I think that was around for one year, and it went back. So, if a student is here in a kindergarten situation and becomes homeless, they are a student of North Andovers until either they graduate or become a resident of another town or community.
Correct, yeah.
But there was a, I think it was just one year, it might have been two, but I think it was one, where if they went, you know, middle to high school, elementary to middle, they could go, they could become
They became the responsibility of the other district, yeah.
Well, they'd become a student of that district, yes.
Yeah.
There's other parts of the law that make sure that people who are students who are experiencing homelessness can enroll in the district with some more lenient guidelines around, like vaccinations and such, to make sure that they have opportunity to get schooled, but nothing stands in the way.
The most important purpose of the law is to, for stability for kids that bounce around. And, you know, it's, it's something, I think, that, you know, coming out of the pandemic, we've seen more food insecurity that we talked about at one of the last meetings, and we've seen an increased cases of people not having adequate housing. And so, we have that. And we also have, there was the change with the Department of Children and Families as well, where now that, maybe about, it's probably the second, yeah, it might be the third, where they put, the DCF puts together a team to have an educational stability meeting on the best interest determinations of students. And so, we're required to abide by that. And so, you know, someone could experience homelessness and actually have to be in another community, and DCF may come in if they're involved with a family and make the best interest determination that the student stays, for example, in North Andover.
Okay, well, thank you for that, helped me understand that. And then the last question was, there's a line item in there that's labeled specialists, so I was asking what that was paying for.
Right, and that's specifically for special education, when we bring somebody in, because we don't have that position in the district. We contract for those positions.
For those services, okay. Alright, thank you for that. Does anyone have any other items we want to discuss?
A little bit of a clarifying question, might be perhaps for Dr. Merely. So, the total of the budget is 63,684,174. So, that's what's, if we approve, when we approve, that's what will go to town manager and the select board ultimately for town meeting.
Correct, that's the 5.5% increase, yes.
If, for some reason, we need to make a change or a modification after that that is not impacting the total of that, we would just move probably within two meetings, like we could, I'm just making it up. You know, we could move $1,000 from equipment rental and lease to legal services.
At any time.
At any time.
At any time, we can make changes to the lines, as long as the bottom line never stays the same.
Okay, so as long as we approve that 63,684,174,000, 174,000 for town manager, that is.
Correct.
So, we can't go to 175.
124.50?
99 still says 74.
Perfect. Thank you.
Alright. I think we should discuss the request we received last, last week and how we want to respond to that. I guess I'll start. I, I wonder if, if the amount, since the amount was not a gigantic amount that was requested, if that can be covered by existing budget items, or whether we need to really allocate if that can be covered by existing budget items or whether we need to really allocate specifically to it. So I guess I'd like to ask for some, for some history on that in terms of past requests. Is it an amount that we think we can handle within what's here? Or do we really need to establish a line item for it?
So I guess the best way to answer it would be, one, I don't know exactly what the number is. I thought it was 10, but maybe it was-
I think it was seven, it was less than 10.
Seven something, and then did that include the reserve? There was a $5,000 reserve and I didn't know if that was included in that. So it would be a matter of understanding the exact number that's being requested. But regarding how that could be accommodated, one way would be, we have a contingency already and it could come out of that, the 235,000, or everything, not everything, I mean, it's educated guesses in most cases, right? So when you take a big number like the increase to out of district tuition, and we're guessing, you know, what it was 13 point something percent that we've put in there, if we took seven or less from there, it's not going to really have much of an impact on it. So you could certainly ask us to move from that line to, if you were so inclined to make that change. So those are a couple of options.
Okay, and I guess the second, this is just my questions that have occurred to me. In, in our past history, in the last few years, have we been helping CPAC with funding at all in like any requests have come in that we've been able to cover or what's the history?
Well, from what, in conversations with Marcy, what she has indicated is when they have indicated a need, and I don't know if they've always identified need and communicated that, but when they have, she's been able to accommodate it, to cover it or get it for them. To what extent, I don't know, you know, annually, how much that has been.
Does anyone else have questions or comments?
Well, I would make that request to make them a separate line item. I believe it was under 8,000, just under, and I know that was in the pack that they had submitted. The 5,000 reserves, I believe, was coming out of what they were working on for fundraising, so it wasn't a request of us. It was just that, that solid number. I would like to see them have a line item, and if we could move that money to be able to accommodate that, I would make that request.
I remember, I recall it also being under 8,000. I don't know if I have it with me or not.
I think they ended up linking the report to the agenda. I don't have my laptop with me.
I do.
I think it was seven.
Was it seven?
Yeah.
Seven change.
Yeah, seven change. I want to say 7,400.
I knew it was under eight.
Yes, for sure. Okay, all right.
I'm very, we're open to discussing it.
Yeah, we're still discussing.
Well, I don't know if that was a motion or just a statement.
That was a statement to open it for discussion.
Yeah.
I would very much love to do that. I, because there, I can foresee some definite needs that that could be used for in the next year. My one little hesitancy is I also want to see what comes out of the recommendations so that we can be certain that it aligns to those as well as it can. I can imagine that what, I'm speculating, I can imagine that one of the recommendations is going to be something along the lines of making sure that parents have access to meetings and feel empowered to work there, right? It could be something there, in which case the program that they're proposing would be a perfect fit, right? And I would, I want to be able to fund that. And I'm wondering if we have the ability afterwards, as Mr. McDever acknowledged, to move things around, is that a better time to do it or is it better to do it in this moment? And I could be convinced, I'm just saying that that's just what I'm thinking.
The number is, just so everyone knows, $7,345.
The other, my one, this is a technical thing, and I think I could get over it, is if we added line item in right now, then we have to very quickly find the place to take the money from. And I want to make sure if we're doing that, we're being thoughtful about where to shift. And I don't know if I have the ability to do that right now. I would also be okay with adding 7,400 and change to the number at the bottom or take it from that 235, but that is also money that we want to be able to spend on special ed review proposals, equity audit review proposals, security stuff. And we just don't know what those things are going to be, so I'm also nervous about allocating all of that now, but 7,000 is like a small chunk of that, right? So it also might not mean that much. Those are all just the things I'm thinking.
So if, Jim, if we added it to the overall amount, how much does that change? Is that, is that a big ask?
I mean, the initial answer is yes, that's a big ask. Yes.
It will offset the apple cart, yeah.
I would much prefer to do it as I had suggested earlier, that the out of district line, it's a big line and, you know, 7,345 isn't going to make much difference in that line. So if you're so inclined, the only caution, I think, would be, my concern is that probably Marcy has some role in ensuring that whatever expenses, and I'm not casting any aspersions, but we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that it's used properly, that there's be some type of connection to that.
Yes, that's understood.
And Dr. Merely, if, and you mean taking it out of the out of district tuition?
Correct.
Which is 2.5 million?
Correct.
Let's just play it out a little bit. If all of a sudden that was short a little bit at the end of the year, there is a, well, there was a special ed stabilization fund that's getting wrapped up into something else now that would be able to cover those.
Right, if there are changes, it's interesting, this year because of OSD, the one, the state didn't, well, they have taken one action. Every year, there's the ability to apply for extraordinary relief. So when you put in your claims for this year, for next year's reimbursement, then anything that was 25% more than what you had the previous year in eligible claims becomes eligible for reimbursement, add again 75%. So there'll be that available for next year because we will exceed it. But they're also doing something this year, and I'm trying to remember, something reserve that would be available this year as well. So they have done something. But where I was going with this is if something happens in that line item, like out of district tuition-
7,500.
It's not a 7,500 dollar difference, right? It's a bigger one.
7,500.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
So if there's a bump there, it's a significant bump.
You, yes.
The only thing that occurs to me is that if, if when, so I'm just trying to get the timing in my head, we're going to get, we may not, we may not receive the special ed review results before we have to vote on the budget, right? In fact, it seems likely that we won't.
Likely.
Yeah, or another way to put it, unlikely that we will, likely we won't.
Is Marcy going to check and see if we get like-
Yeah, I was wondering about that as well.
Preliminary sneak peek of recommendations.
Maybe year one or something.
Part of me is also, part of me, like counter to what I just said three minutes ago, is also thinking, this is also a need that the CPAC as an advisory council has already identified as something that would be good for parents, and there's like something important about us also recognizing that and trusting them in that, in making that judgment and valuing that as well, regardless of what the recommendations might say. So that's also there.
Well, where I was going with that is that I was surmising there might be an overlap, right, where the recommendation came back, it's exactly the same thing that was requested, so we wouldn't need to double budget it, but it seems like it's-
I, I, I guess I would, I'm probably going to have an unpopular opinion here. I'm hesitant because for a few different reasons, and it's not that I don't value the CPAC and all of the, the presentation last week was excellent, and those presentations and activities and events that they have planned are phenomenal and are needed. My hesitation, one, is after talking with Mr. Nugent and Dr. Merely and other conversations that we've had about stipends for coaches and other extracurricular activities, I feel like $7,000 could be put towards that. I'm uncomfortable moving, to me, I mean, I guess, I'm uncomfortable moving that money from an established budget that we can see in black and white here that is already very tight for, when it's, it's, I don't know, it just, it makes me very uncomfortable. I would maybe feel better if there was a way that Marcy was directly involved, like you said, Jim, on establishing how that works, when these line items here are all going through the district directly, through employees of the district. And that is secure. I just, it feels, it feels uncomfortable to me. And I, I don't know, I just, I would rather see, I don't know, it just doesn't feel good to me.
Well, we could, we could require a sign off, right? I mean-
Nothing gets dispersed without going through the accounting process anyway. But I'm going to agree with Pam on this. The timing of the presentation, which was excellent, and I agree that you guys are doing great work, having to coincide with when the budget was being presented. I think the plan was that it was supposed to be, you know, kind of in the fall time period, but the meeting was not planned or anticipated on groups within town to come and to solicit for funds. The PTOs could very easily be here and say, we would like $1,000 each. The athletic director could be here and say, could have had the opportunity to say, I would like an additional $50,000 for something at the, at the high school. Band, music, chorus. None of them came and presented anything or nor were they given a day of come and present something and we were going to tweak and modify. I think in all honesty, if Marcy is able to accommodate this with the programming lines that she has within the budget, I think that that's appropriate. I think if the committee opens this up to individual groups recommending or requesting funds, this will be a very difficult process going forward because you, we are going to have a process where somebody is going to say, I really want to do this, understanding our differences. We would like to do more programming. And we're going to say, we're going to value, I don't know, maybe a new gym floor, better than we're going to value that. And I, I would strongly caution against this.
I think the difference for me, Mr. McDever, is all the, except for understanding our differences, all the other groups that you named are, have an avenue to talk with the principals, to make requests for that type of programming, or can go through capital expenses. Like there is a process that they can use, we don't necessarily get it directly, but there is an opportunity there to, to work, there should be through the building principles to make the requests and see, and see what are the things that they want to fund. And I very much value the, some of the other groups that you named, and especially the PTO and, and the understanding our differences, but this is also a group that we're like legislatively required to, to have. And I just think that, I think it makes it a little different than those other ones.
But not fund, we're not required.
Yep, and I would want to give money to all the peoples, and I'm not going to be shy about that. So it's just like, I, there is, if the athletic department needs more funds, there is a way for the athletic director to go about making those requests. And, yeah, that's all.
I was going to make the comment about the legislative mandate to have it, I guess we're not obligated to fund it. My, my viewpoint here is I, I do feel like that our special education director should have a sign off here. I don't know, I'm thinking that, I feel like, I feel like we do have an obligation through, through the legislative directive, right, that they, that to assist them. The big question I have is whether it has to be done by a line item.
But they asked for 7,400.
Specifically, yeah.
What if they asked for 17,000?
Well, that, you mean, next year or?
Sure.
Right, like what's, what's, what's the process for this? What's the guidelines for this? And how are, like-
Is it a dollar a student? Is it $2 a student?
And if their board changes and changes their mind and changes, I just, I don't see a lot of regulation, and so that makes me uncomfortable. And it's not, it's not to say that, you know, like I said, everything about the presentation was great, I love all of those ideas, and I, I just, the way that this is working and the way that the two, or the district and we all need to work together, but it doesn't necessarily have to come in the form of 7,400 in a public school budget. I just, that feels wrong. I feel like, if I, if you gave me 7,400 to spend in this budget, I, I bet you could line up some teachers and how they would, what they could do with it. I just, I don't know, I don't, it doesn't feel right.
Give me a second. Is there a way to see some detail on, Jim, is there a way to understand some detail on what Marcy's budget actually is? I mean, I know this is a very big number for special education, right? It's 50 million.
So the only difference, the budget in the book has every single line item in the budget. And it shows you the location, and it has the account description by location, so there's not much more detail that you could get other than that.
Okay. Where I'm going with that is-
I mean, we could show you vendors and what money's been spent on, but-
Where I'm going with that is if, I'm just going to posit, right, that the 7,400 being requested here is probably useful, good stuff, right? And that if those requests came into Marcy, what I'm really asking is, would she have the ability to honor them if she, if that's how we decided to deal?
She indicated that she has.
Right, so she could absorb those expenses in her existing budget is what-
That's what's happened, right? She has line items for supplies and materials, professional development, whatever else it might be.
And then that communication between the CPAC and her, which I feel like has been really solid in the last few years, and as far as I understand, that's, to me, that feels better. And it, maybe it would be helpful if we kept, if there was a documentation for a year of expenses that the CPAC has needed, that gives exact dollar amounts for X, Y, and Z.
An alternative, because, you know, Marcy is-
What's her future projection?
Marcy should be the one involved in the decision, and she does get requests each year. So it might be a good compromise that we have a line item dedicated to start the year, but it's still under Marcy's discretion, and it's to accommodate those requests if they come in, and if they come into that amount, then that's available to cover other expenses in the budget.
Do we have, and Marcy might know this, but she's in here, how other districts are handling CPACs? I mean, are they, are they funding them, are they not? What's, what's the norm that's happening in other districts?
I don't know, I feel like that would have been a good question last week.
Well, we have a guest in the room.
I tend to tell you that, you know, Dr. Merely is on the board of Masbo. And, you know, right now, in many of the local communities, they're experiencing cuts. So it's, I'm not sure what the specific answer is to it, but it's, I think- not sure what the specific answer is to it, but it's, I think it's a challenge in a lot of communities, right now with the budgets everywhere.
I can find out, too. They're pretty active with the listserv. I can send that question out.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know how other districts are handling it.
I, I think it'd be important to know if Marcy can absorb some of this. And, and I think that that's a fair question to ask. But a separate line item, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, I am an absolute no on, unless we are adding line items for a lot of other organizations who are asking for funds.
Okay, so, to proceed, well, there's no motion, there's no motion on the floor, right?
No question.
So, we're just in a discussion. If there is no motion made, we can consider discussing this further and maybe get the answer to that question in the meantime. That's what I think I'd like to see us do. So, the, the question, Jim, would be, you know, what, what information you can gather on what other districts do. I guess I'd like to know Marcy's comfort level with that amount of money coming out of funds she's already been alloc, or plans to have allocated. I mean, I think my sense of the room here is that we wanna support this. It's a matter of the mechanism that would be best. At least, that's my impression, for what it's worth. So, if I don't hear a motion, I think we'll continue this to the next meeting. And made that request for more information from you.
Yep, I have it.
Okay. All right. Do we have any new business?
Oh, are we...
We already did it.
Are we talking about, I had other things to say about budget.
Oh.
That's just budget.
You're right.
There's a whole lot more budget.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Let's keep going.
I understand all the pain points that exist in creating this year's budget, and how tight it is. And largely because of some of the choices this committee made to, to support and, and pay our teachers a substantial more next year, right? And that, that takes up a lot of the space that we, we had there. So, and I understand that completely, and that, that was something that we needed to do, and I'm not saying that was a bad idea. At the same time, last year, we had also talked about exploring what it might mean to, to eliminate some of the user fees we have in town around transportation and/or athletics, which, I think our athletics, it's roughly around 300 grand. Am I remembering that now?
So, on both, transportation is a little over three each year, and athletics has been a little over three, now it's a little under. And all of our community programs, not food services anymore because it's universal, but transportation, preschool, and athletics are all going down because free and reduced is going up.
Got it.
Eligible.
So, I, I know that discussing that this year is not really a possibility. It's just not in the cards, right? But I also don't want us to forget about, that, that was something we had talked about earlier in this school committee year, and that is not, and that, it makes me sad that we can't have that discussion right now, because, and that's not a possibility, 'cause it's, it bothers me that we have to, kids have to pay to participate in athletics and to get to school. I mean, I know that, that part's optional, it's 'cause you don't need to, 'cause we provide the transportation, we need to, but it's, it still doesn't feel good to me. So, I just wanna keep that on our radar as something to explore for next year in terms of, is there a way to eliminate and/or reduce some of those families as, as much as possible? And that might be a thing to think about next year, for the following budget, when raises aren't going to be quite as high. But, of course, we're also hiring, going to have more staff because of middle school. So, I, I just gotta say it.
It's interesting, like, well, what's interesting is, you know, it's, we've had fees since 1991 here in North Andover. And it's a, it's a long time. And so, I, 'cause I've thought about that question a lot, you know, if there's a way to eliminate, I think, to Jim's point, like, we've seen a shift with, with food going to universal, free. They used to be the ones that really struggled, because they had a lot more people getting services, you know, on free and reduced. And now it's the opposite, like, community programs used to have more, we had more students that paid, and now we have more students that go at a reduced or, or free. And so, anything we can do to eliminate any of those barriers is always a good thing. I just know, what's crazy about sports is my, my own kids have both done sports, one does one now, and they, the, the fees for youth, like, I'd be thinking to myself, "Oh, my word, can't wait to get to high school." That is just like a fraction of what baseball costs.
The amount I spend on gymnastics every year is...
You know, so...
Dumb.
But it certainly has come up over the years.
Yeah. I just wanna keep it on our, I understand the reasons why, and I'm not mad about the reasons, 'cause it's what we have to do, but also, it makes me a little sad that we can't just talk about it.
There are some positives with that as well, if I can just throw that out. I don't think we've increased any fees in a significant amount of time. I don't think we have since I've been here.
Since I've been here.
I think the only thing that we may have gotten rid of, and I could be wrong on, was probably about nine or 10 years ago, if you paid for transportation before, like, July 1st or something like that, you got some form of a discount. But, you know, for 7th grade and, and above. But, other than that, I don't think we've done anything regarding that as well.
At least twelve years, yeah.
And the one big one, which I think impacts a significant number of people, but was a, probably a two-year project with some really good legwork, with town manager, it was Andrew Mailer at the time, was the elimination of kindergarten and moving to full-day kindergarten. So, we kind of, I think it was like a one-year kind of, almost loan from the town in order to kind of fund it, and then the state reimbursed, as, as they now kind of continue to, to do so, on our, on our student funding. So, that was a huge...
Improvement, yeah.
Fee that was kind of put on, on families. And, and I don't remember exactly, but I wanna say it was about $3,200 or something like that.
It was four grand at the end.
Okay, all right.
Not, not that I'm sour on it, but my, my son was the last year that paid.
Yeah.
Same with, I know Mr. McDevitt.
Zora Warren was on the committee.
I think it was 35, I think it was either 32 or 35.
Yeah.
A hundred.
Now, we, the Brown children, the older ones, were in that very same boat.
And those were very good things, that keeping the fees low and having all-day kindergarten were fantastic things. Absolutely.
I mean, I'd like to add another aspirational thing, 'cause it came up a lot in the, in the teacher negotiations, that, you know, we, we don't offer late buses, and we don't offer athletic buses, things like that, that would help a lot. And again, I understand that's, it's, it's a, the cost benefit there is, is, is lower, so we don't do it. But, you know, when we're aspiring to, to make improvements, that's something we should keep on our radar as well. Right?
You need to be clear that, that's, late buses for athletes. You're not talking about buses to events. You're talking about...
No, 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 I'm talking about after-school activities.
Those who stay practicing and could...
Right, but it could also be for, for clubs, or for music, or whatever, you know, the, some way to accommodate them.
Right.
It's part of the reason why a lot of the clubs meet before school.
It's for that reason.
Because they get dropped off in time to do it.
Yeah. So, but, I mean, it's, we should have goals, and, and I just wanted to throw that in there, because that'd be a nice one as well.
Yeah, I can assure both Joe and, this has been kind of near and dear to Andrew, that we're not letting this go. We, you know, this year was not the year to, to discuss it, but we certainly have a lot of data, and we're gonna add to that data, and it will be available to everybody. And we will be having these discussions as we go forward.
And you mean the data around the extracurricular?
All of the extracurricular.
Because that could really show us what the need is, and...
Right, and, and generating more comparables for all the fees that we have, so that we have that data.
Great.
Yeah, we know these activities, athletics, the different groups, like, they are life-changing for our kids.
Yep.
And, you know, feel pretty comfortable with folks who have a need, that we can meet that need. It's oftentimes folks who don't necessarily have a need in a community, they're getting by, just getting by, paycheck to paycheck, and then that extra becomes the challenge.
There's a lot of space between what the government says is poverty and what, what you can do to, we have to do to be able to live in our town to, to be, do able to do the things. There's a lot of, those aren't the same level.
One parent, as one parent said to me, you know, it's the challenge of being middle-class.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion on superintendent's recommended budget?
Overall, I will say, Dr. Gilligan, I am, I mean, I'm the one who's always gonna wanna ask for more, and be very, very unhappy if it has to be less. And I, I really do thank you and your team for, for doing all the work to make this a level services budget, 'cause that, that is a absolute necessity for me. I, I wouldn't even be able to think about something not being level services. So, I appreciate that.
And we are fortunate that we were able to at least put away a little bit for the, you know, the expected hit we're gonna take with the findings on these four different studies.
Yeah, I think I would term him as opportunities, not hits.
I was gonna say, I wouldn't say hits. I would actually say that, like, they are going to be longer.
Guidance about what we should do next and how prioritize.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a finance professor. To me, the negative, okay, but yes.
Dave, just longer-term plans, that are multi-year, multi-phase, multi-budgeted, capital-operating, a whole host of things.
Yeah. You understood my, my meaning, right? The, the, okay, you're right. It's better, better way to put it, certainly, is opportunities. But, those opportunities are gonna, as, as you know, my worry is the opportunities is gonna exceed the amount that we've allocated for them. So, that's, that's my concern, right, that we come back and that we, we get. But I, I do agree that most likely, they're either gonna, much of it will fall into security, for example, fall into capital, much more than expense, and, and, you know, the, the other ones are not going to be immediate, large hits. Sorry, large expenses, right? They'll be over time, so we should be able to accommodate that. I gotta change my terminology. I can't help it, I'm teaching finance, right? It's like, so what's the terms that are used? Okay. Any further discussion on, on the budget? Okay. Then, I think we are, we already did new business. Is there any other new business? Okay, hearing none, we are, we already did the calendars, right? So, public comment?
Sasha Weinrich, 21, Sawyer Road. As a CPAC member and as a president of the board, I don't speak for CPAC, I speak for myself. But I think after hearing this board's discussion this evening, it is important that I try to continue to educate both the public who'll be watching this and the school committee on what CPAC is. Mass General Law, Section 3 of Chapter 71B states that "The parent advisory council duties shall include, but not be limited to, advising the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities." So, the school committee, not necessarily just members of the administration. Meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school committee's special education programs. The parent advisory council shall establish bylaws regarding officers and operational procedures, which we have. I'd, you know, really urge everyone to go look at them, they're brand-new, and I think that they incorporate best practices from CPACs all over Massachusetts. And in the course of our duties under this section, the parent advisory council shall receive assistance from the school committee without charge upon reasonable notice, and of course, subject to the availability, availability of funds. It is really surprising to hear members of this board compare us to things like band or athletic teams, when the students we serve are the most vulnerable of our population, and we are not comparable to band or athletic teams. What we do is not the same. That being said, to provide clarity on some of the things and questions that were asked, CPAC has fundraised and has not asked the district for any money in 2003 at all. Excuse me, 2023, 2003, 2023?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have that history.
In 2023.
Right.
As a building year, we spent a lot of time trying to make sure through parent surveys, we understood what the needs of parents in our district are. We also, as a board, reached out to parents privately to see what their needs are, and we communicated that, I think, overwhelmingly with this board. We work incredibly close with the director of special education, of course, and our entire presentation was reviewed with her and previewed, including our budget prior to your, our presentation to you. Out of respect for her, because we very much respect her, but also because we believe in working with the district to make sure that our students' needs are met. To hear anything other than that is, is, or to state anything other than that is not accurate. But I think, for me, you know, if, if there's anything I can do to try to continue to educate people on what a CPAC is, I'd, I'd be all ears. But again, the law states it pretty clearly. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Bye.
Lauren Stedman, 575 South Bradford Street. So, this is how my son, James, communicates, and my son, Dominic, okay? They're students at the A, B, E, C, C. And while I think you have wonderful programs across your schools, and I am new to this district, I can tell you that zero of your programs that you mentioned, as far as band, gym floors, PTOs, all of that, he can be a part of. That's not your fault, that's not my fault, that's not James' fault. I will say, I do hold you somewhat responsible for not having inclusive after-school activities for those nonverbal students. I do. Because where my money goes, and my husbands and many families, if they're fortunate enough to afford it, goes to Ironstone in Andover, spending $400 a month on equine therapy, or swim lessons, so that they don't drown, because drowning is the number-one cause for autistic people, especially children. And I don't know if you remember this past summer, but we had three residents of Massachusetts under the age of 10 years old die because of water safety. So, when you talk about you feel uncomfortable about how we're gonna delegate the money, or if we're gonna get Marcy's sign-off, I ask you, do you wanna compare yourselves to other districts who aren't supporting their CPACs? 'Cause I can tell you that, speaking with other Mass PAC members, no, a lot of them don't get funding. They're told to go to their PTOs, which we shared with you, our PTOs don't have money themselves, they're having issues with raising. So, if we wanna be subpar, and tell our community, the most vulnerable, that we're happy with being comparable to everyone else, what kind of school district is North Andover? Do we set ourselves apart, or do we just say that we're okay with being subpar due to financial reasons, risks, and liabilities? The programming that we brought to you and put in front of you, while I heard you all say that you agree that you'd like to support, hearing people say that they're uncomfortable, that's exactly what we also tried explaining to you during our presentation. Let's not be uncomfortable. Let's not. Because when I go out in public and my son stims, and he flaps, and we get stares and judgments, again, not pointing fingers, anybody here saying, "You do it," but that's the reality of my life. I don't have the choice to not feel uncomfortable. Neither does my son. We came to North Andover so that we could be members of your community in an inclusive way. We're here to open up the conversation. And I can tell you, I've been very fortunate to have a wonderful, Kim Angelo is a absolute godsend. She is bar none, I feel, one of the best special ed teachers in the state of Massachusetts. She didn't have a device to communicate with my son. The speech and language therapist who meets with my son twice a week, he has one of these iPads, she does. She spends a total of one hour with my son for service. The pair is in his classroom, the head teacher, they do not have one of these devices. Why? It's $300. So, what I did was, I took my own money, and I purchased it for her. That was their Christmas gift. Because in my mind, she should not be using my son's device, that sounds like a five-year-old, to be communicating with him, or taking his device to use it and model. Because if I'm talking to you, Dr. Gilligan, I cover your mouth while you're talking, is that direct conversation? No. That's not reciprocal. We're not teaching him the functions of communication. So, where would I like to see some of this funding go eventually? Yeah, I'd like these nonverbal students to be able to share their voices with everyone, their classrooms, their communities, to become more substantial members than what they already are. So, while you saw us give a brief presentation about what we plan to do, there's so much in the future that if you wanna see PAC who's motivated and wants to do the work, 'cause again, we are parents of special needs children. We are pulled in more directions than neurotypical parents. That's just the reality of our lives. We are pulled in more directions... We are pulled in more directions, we deal with more stresses, we have more issues to encounter on a day-to-day basis than it takes support from the community. And what better way to show that you support the community of the most vulnerable population than by putting yourselves behind us and what we need in order to do our jobs? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? I believe we are finished with the agenda.
Motion to adjourn? A second.
All right, let's vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we're adjourned. Eight-thirty.